I have my microphone there. Are we ready? Okay. Kia ora, everybody. Welcome to the information session this morning. We've got apologies from Mayor Major, Councillor Hensstock and Councillor McClellan. And we've got Councillor Johansson and Donovan on Zoom. So that's what I've heard of them so far. So we'll kick away with the first one, which is the continuation of our IHP Plan Change 14 briefing. And welcome Brent and Ike. So over to you for a very long session, but we'll get through it. Cheers. I've been told that you've tried to simplify it as much as possible, so I'm looking forward to that.
We, we have, and hopefully that's worked. To recap a little bit, this is the second of two information sessions on Plan Change 14. When we were presenting the first one last week, we ran through the decision-making process. And at a high level, the content of the IHP recommendations. Now, we are going to do that again. I'll be running through the decision-making process very briefly. And then Ike will be spending a lot more time in going through the IHP recommendations. The second part of that will be referring to the Local Government Act decision that the council will be making on the 4th of September. And that decision is about whether to make resolutions on the parts of the IHP recommendations that could, if the council wishes, be delayed until December of next year. Now, the objective in doing this is partly to ensure that we've shared as much information as we can in these sessions, but also partly so that if you do have any questions of clarification that you want to ask of elected, you want to ask of the independent hearings panel, or there are any alternative recommendations that you're thinking about taking to the council meeting on the 4th of September, staff know that now so that we can ask those questions of the IHP because time's running out for doing it. And so that staff can gather any information that is necessary for you to be fully informed if you are proposing an alternative recommendation.
Okay, that's great. And just letting you know that we will break at 10:30 for a 15-minute break because we're going through to 11:45, so we'll do that. Have you got a process question, Tyler? Okay.
If there are fundamental differences between the IHP's view and the council's view, so you're saying that you take it back to the IHP around our recommendations for an alternative resolution? What's the sort of the scope there in terms of making that change?
Yeah, so if you are thinking about taking to the council meeting on the 4th of September, a recommendation to reject an IHP recommendation and take an alternative recommendation forward, then what I was explaining was that it's important that staff know as soon as possible that you are planning on doing that, so that staff can help all elected members be fully informed about the evidence and the IHP recommendations and the submissions and so on, on that particular topic. So it's about making a bundle. It's giving the staff the opportunity to make a bundle that you need in order to be fully informed. Now, if the council decision on the 4th is to reject an IHP recommendation and to propose something different, then that doesn't go back to the IHP, it goes to the minister. The minister then becomes the decision-maker on whether to go with the IHP recommendation or the council recommendation.
Okay, just on that process thing, Councillor McDonald raised a really good question that was circulated in the memo, which was finding some middle ground with the IHP for them to be able to agree with it. Would that be a possibility?
No, there's no process for that.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Could we just as a process not have advice prepared on what the IHP have rejected and take that to the minister? Would they, I'm just, because what I'm, and I don't know, Sarah, I don't know if you've canvassed it yet. Not yet, okay. What, what, okay, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is we, in a normal environment, we would rely on a portion of staff advice to help navigate a council to make a decision. And I get the fact that it's an independent hearings panel, but I guess what I'm wondering is, can we get advice that effectively what has been rejected by the HP, which I think is very frustrating and disappointing and has cost people a lot, a lot of money? Can we not just have a pro forma for the views that we don't still align with to then go to the minister for consideration?
Just, just unpacking that a little bit. So when the IHP, when you say when the IHP has rejected something, then the IHP has started with the Plan Change 14 proposal that the council notified.
Yes.
And then has taken into account all the submissions and all the evidence from all those submitters.
Correct.
So in order for the council's decision-making process to be sound in relation to going with the or preferring what the council originally notified, the bundles we're talking about is staff collating all that information so you can be fully informed on what other submitters were saying.
Maybe, maybe.
And the reasons for it. Now, it would be possible for, if you wish for the council to say, we've considered all that information and we remain of the view that what the council originally notified was appropriate and put that forward to the minister, that's possible.
Yeah.
And.
So what, what I guess I'm trying to get, so that, that's really good. And sorry, Pauline, I just think it's quite important that I get it.
Yeah, because noting that they've already had the evidence, obvious.
Yeah. Well, what I'd quite like, what I'd, what I'd really like, and sorry, I'm quite simplistic when it comes to stuff, is the stuff that they agree with us on, can we box on and do that? So the stuff where our submissions have said, let's do that, and where there seems to be general consensus, but on the fundamental stuff we don't agree on, can we not just have effectively, that when the staff report comes in, we accept effectively what they've agreed with? And then we have alternatives that go to the minister for consideration? I just think in terms of how we make a decision as a council, I'm trying to get to a point where there's a mechanism where we can do it in a collective way. And I just think that might be the simplest way.
So you're saying to bundle up everything we've rejecting?
What I'm saying is if we take our submission, you know, effectively our council view on it, and I mean, I know there'll be different views within that, but if we take it as the guiding principle and go, actually, IHP landed on this stuff, which we kind of agree with, we can notify that. But on the stuff we didn't, well, yeah, because I, I guess I'm just struggling with the fact we surely must be able to get a level of staff advice on the stuff that has been rejected, given it was a staff or a council submission. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, but I would just say that would have already been in there because we were support, those are changes that we supported.
But what I'm, I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to do is get to a simplistic way of us having stuff we can reject from the IHP on the 4th of September, which in my mind is the stuff that they haven't agreed with.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is we could just cut and paste because the work's been done. Is that correct, Brent? That work's been done on everything that we already.
So, big, big picture. Yes, I agree. That is the purpose of the meeting on the 4th of September. The purpose of the meeting on the 4th of September is for the council to collectively identify those parts of the IHP recommendations.
That we don't agree.
That it accepts and those parts that it doesn't accept. So, so, so totally agree. And, and it's the role of staff to help you do that without giving you advice on the merits of what the IHP is recommending.
Without giving us an opinion, you can give us some advice.
Without giving you advice on the merits of what the IHP is recommending. So, so we're giving you advice on process and, and the staff roles to help you make that decision on the 4th of September. But as, as for what aspects of the IHP recommendations you accept and reject, I don't think there's much by way of a streamlined way we can help you do that. It is possible that the council might settle on preferring what the council originally notified. But that might not be the same as the council position in the right of reply at the close of hearing, for example. And it certainly won't be the same as evidence led by some submitters.
Right. So how do we get a staff view on our submissions that reflects the changes that have incorporated and the changes that have been rejected in totality? Like in terms of, we need a mechanism at the meeting to be able to land on a position. And I can't see how we would do it in a constructive way otherwise.
Yeah, so I, and going through the IHP recommendations, we, it's possible to identify what the council originally notified and the difference between that and where the IHP has landed in its recommendations. And that's part of what you're, you're doing in the second part of this meeting, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, to an extent. I mean, what I'm thinking about is the memo that we circulated immediately after the recommendation was issued, which is a high-level table with the key topics of what we notified versus where the IHP landed. And so what we had in that table was highlighting what council had notified. It doesn't reflect the final position that we had in our council right of apply. So if your interest is specifically asking for us to collate what the council's final right of apply position was versus the IHP, then we can do a comparison of that, if you will, and update on the table that we circulated earlier.
I wonder if that would be an easy way to then get a view on what we accept and reject?
Yeah, I, I think staff can take that away and think about how we might do that.
Yeah.
Because we'd want that before.
I understand the question.
Yeah.
We'd want that before the 4th of.
Oh, well, before, I guess that's the thing is we need, we need a mechanism to be able to make a decision as a council. And, and, you know, to be really blunt, I think sitting around here going, we think we'll accept that, we won't accept that is not going to work. So we need a considered group view.
Yeah, Sarah.
Just to, I guess, follow on from this, thank you for the answers that we've got so far, which is, which is really useful. It's an enormous amount of work and if, when you look at the, the documents themselves, they're huge. It would be enormous amount of work for staff to collate all of the information and evidence required to put to the ministers, advisors and the ministers for alternate recommendations on everything where there's a difference. Especially given that in some things, the panel was clear, there was no evidence for our position to start with, that, that kind of stuff. So sometimes it's, if we wanted to really target the, the key things we want changed and we want the piece of the recommendations that go up to be really well drafted, have plenty of evidence and have really good shot at passing past the minister, we probably need to be more targeted than doing like a blanket approach. My key question really is about drafting advice. So you can't, or drafting assistance. So when I look at the amendments that were drafted for the Wellington plan, so they had their plan change, they had to go through a similar process. Councilors had assistance from staff to draft amendments to the panels, or yeah, alternate recommendations amendments that then were voted on and went to the minister and some then passed and some didn't. Most the minister approved. It's that drafting piece. So the memo that we received with the advice just recently said that we wouldn't, because of transparency issues, we wouldn't be able to sit down and have conversations with staff about amendments that we want to drafting. I think that seems incredibly risk adverse to the point where we can't really do our jobs to draft amendments. So how do we do that? Do we need to like just have a public session here that's open where we can sit down and nut out amendments? I don't know.
Yeah, if, if, if that's what the memo says, I don't think it's what we intended it to say.
Okay.
What, what we intended it to say was drop in sessions to ask for the questions along the lines of the questions that you're asking in this information session, that it's better that that happens in public. So, so not, not sort of further drop in sessions like that. But it is really important that staff are available to provide this drafting service.
Okay.
To, to help draft these provisions. And, and so that can happen one-on-one. But it's important that we just be very clear that that's not an advice session. That's not.
That's right.
It's not staff advising on the merits again.
No, it's just, you know, providing a service to councillors so that they can put the amendments together.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks.
Councillor Peters, did you have another process or has it been answered?
Yes, it's kind of a process. Isn't the independent hearings panel actually going to appear before us at any stage?
No.
No, right. It's on.
Councillor Harrison Hunt, you've just got a tiny wee process.
Yeah, very quick. It's on the, I guess, as a collective, we want to put in resolutions of potential alternatives. How do we align everything that's going on? For example, one councillor might have a walkable catchment amendment, another one might have a sunlight retention amendment. They may be the same but in different scopes. How are we going to align all of our views to put on to the 4th of September?
I was wondering.
Yeah, good, good question. Does it need another information session? Does it need another break session like this?
Probably, I, I would imagine that once you receive all the, the items that individual councillors are wanting to reject from the recommendations from the hearings panel and forward to the minister, perhaps we need another information session after that, once you've collated them. If the councillors are happy with it, we'll try and squeeze one in somewhere. Is it a process question?
Well, it's on exactly that point you're talking about is how we do that. It's, it's almost more like a workshop where ideas are put in or suggestions are put in and then either everyone's agreeing or they're not, rather than everyone emailing stuff through to staff, may come back with an outline and then suddenly a quarter of the room don't like it. So it's easier when Tyler might throw something up and everyone kind of goes, well, that makes sense. So we'll back it or not. And then staff can work on that as we go. If you don't like that, Sarah?
I just think that for this particular process, because it is such a formal and legalistic one, I think that throwing things around the room, having a bit of a straw poll on whether we might vote for it eventually or not, is probably not the most legally safe way to go about it. That's, yeah. I think we just need to, yeah, get the amendments that we think we want to put to the room and get them properly drafted and then formally vote on them in a formal meeting.
We could.
The base stuff, absolutely.
We could end up with a style, mate.
So you're not supporting another information session?
Oh, you know, absolutely, but not straw polling and those kind of things to say.
No, I don't think that's what he was intending. No, I think you're on the same page. Yep. Okay, so we'll go forward with it. Thank you. Good luck finding a time, but we'll probably. How long will it need? An hour? An hour and a half?
Yeah, we'll work that out.
Okay, all right. So we've eaten into 20 minutes of the time, I'm sorry. So I'm not, I know that you can't go any faster because this is big stuff, so fire away.
Okay. Not sure whether I need to spend much time on, on this slide. This is repeating something we said at the last information session. What you have on the slide there is a timeline. And in the top row, we've got to the point where the IHP have delivered their recommendations to the council. Part of the purpose of this slide was to show that the time for public participation in the process was during the periods of those boxes, we've got a yellow outline around the box. We're in a quasi-judicial process. The, the community have had their say. And there is no opportunity for community feedback at this stage. The decision that the councils to make on the 4th of September is twofold. First one is whether the council wants to resolve on all aspects of the IHP recommendations. Because the council's got the opportunity to delay some of them until December of next year. So that's for areas outside of the intensification around centres. For the matters that the council decides that it is going to decide on, on the 4th of September, the question is simply whether the council accepts the IHP recommendations or rejects them. And if it rejects them, is it proposing something different to the minister? If the council accepts the IHP recommendations, those parts of the recommendations become part of the district plan straight away. And there's no rights of appeal, but people can seek, as always, judicial review against council decision-making in the High Court on the basis of irrationality or unreasonableness or failure to take into account relevant considerations. If the council rejects a IHP recommendation, it doesn't go back to the IHP. It's then for the minister to decide. And again, when the minister decides that, there's no appeal rights. Once the minister decides it, goes straight into the district plan. If the council has decided to delay some of its decision-making until the date set in the Gazette notice, which is December of next year, then it's possible that central government might change the law next year. We haven't got detail of the changes yet, but it's possible. And I've just explained this one. Usual rules for your decision-making apply. And this is what we've been talking about over the last 20 minutes, how, how to, how to do this in a, in a practical sort of way. Because there is a huge amount of information that you need to get your heads around in order to be fully informed of the IHP recommendations and fully informed of alternatives to those recommendations. As part of doing that, it's important that you keep an open mind until you've done that. Don't predetermine anything at this stage and don't make any statements that suggest you have done. As I've said, have regard to all relevant information, disregard irrelevant information. Irrelevant information is anything that wasn't available to the IHP and isn't in the IHP records. So getting further information from me or from Ike is having regard to irrelevant information, if that's opinion and advice. Avoid, if you can, getting into discussions with, with people. I know that's very difficult, but the, the more that happens, the more it creates those risks that I've just highlighted. The sole relevant matters for you to take into account when you're making your decision is everything that was available to the IHP. And we've got there under one, a list of what that information is. And the second note up there relates in part to, to a comment Councillor McDonald was making earlier, which was starting with a proposition that the council simply prefers what it originally notified. Do, do make sure that you're not selective in your reading. So, so in order to do that, it's possible that you land at that point, but make sure that you've taken into account everything else in the process of landing at that point. As you cannot take into account anything that wasn't available to the IHP, emails or calls from, from anyone to, to try and talk to you about the merits of the IHP recommendations, that stuff that you can't take into account when you're making your decision. And for similar reasons, that's why staff can't express opinions on the IHP, the merits of the IHP recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you. Great, so what I'm going to go through now is a bit more detail on the RMA side of things in terms of the recommendations themselves. So to recap, is no doubt you will understand by now, the intensification direction is high and wide within and around the CBD and medium density everywhere else being three units and three-storey store through MDRS. The only way to limit intensification is through what's called a qualifying matter and the specific criteria around that. And a qualifying matter cannot restrict anything that is permitted already through the district plan through this particular process as per the High Court decision through what's known as YKNI. There is also the ability to have consequential or other provisions that relate to delivering intensification. For example, subdivision standards, earthworks, fencing, perviousness and basically any other standard that wouldn't restrict density. That's basically the criteria around that. So in terms of delivering all of this, as recommended, this is how Policies 3, 4 and the MDRS resonate. So from a Policy 3 perspective, all commercial centres increase in height. The city centre effectively has no hard limit. At the moment, in the district plan, it is effectively set more or less at about 28 metres. There are some nuance to that, but most places within the centre city are limited to 28. The recommendations as per the IHP remove that hard limit and effectively make it treated on a case-by-case basis. Surrounding that, there's six to 12 stories of high density, HOZ, enabled within the four avenues. Where at the moment is currently 12 to 14 metres enabled in residential areas and four avenues. Eight centres have high density beyond the CBD. At the moment, the district plan only has high density within the four avenues. And so this is a, quite a contrast to what we have in the operative district plan. And over 25 centres have medium density in their surrounds and four stories within that as well, compared to about half a dozen in the operative plan at the moment. From a Policy 4 perspective, which is the qualifying matter lens that applies within those Policy 3 areas, very limited degree of qualifying matters that have applied. The IHP have recommended the rejection of the sunlight access qualifying matter, recommend bush interface heritage areas and any new residential character areas as well. From an MDRS perspective, the recommendation is that the associated matters relating to medium-density residential standards are integrated within the baseline of all high-density and medium-density zones. There's a highly enabling consenting pathway that is applied. Again, that baseline that would exist there or that cap that would exist there in a traditional consenting framework doesn't apply as well in an MDRS scenario. It's more treated on a case-by-case basis. It's really only within the coastal hazards, tsunami operative character areas and residential hill zone areas with mixed density or outline plan overlays where the operative zoning is retained. So at a high level, that's the overview for how Policies 3, 4 and MDRS have been recommended as part of Plan Change 14. From an urban forms perspective, and this is an adapted image that we included as part of the evidence for Plan Change, and it provides a continuum, if you will, of the city to scale at all the different heights that have been enabled across the city. So what you can see there within the central city is that up to 45 metres is actively enabled. And then beyond that, again, no hard limit is consented, considered through a restricted discretionary activity, an RDA, so effectively on a case-by-case basis against specific matters within the district plan. You can see there within the four AVs, we have quite a range of heights, so 39 metres, about 12 stories for the high-density central city residential precinct. And that effectively encircles the, the core business zone within the CBD. We have the large town centres as well at 32 metres within the core and then 14 metres either side. And then the large local centres and town centres also at 22 metres or about six stories from the core as well. Just by comparison, again, this is to scale. The dotted line represents the, more or less the hard limit that we set at operative level within the district plan. And that again shows the contrast to what we have in recommendations for all the centres, including the central city as well. Within the central city itself, just a detail in terms of the cascades, if you will, of control for height. Again, the hard limit that we have in the operative plan is more or less about 28 metres. Under the, under the recommendations from the hearings panel, that requires no consent. Subject to specific standards such as a 21-metre road wall height, effectively means that from the road has to be up 20, 21 metres, but there is no consent that is required for that versus obviously consenting regime that exists in the operative plan. Between 28 to 45 metres, so an additional five or six stories on top of that, consent is required, but the consent must be granted and cannot be notified subject to seeking approval through urban design certification. And that's an urban sign panel that we have set up within the, within Christchurch and exists at the moment. That framework's simply been extended through this to the higher height limit as well. Again, anything above 45 metres is considered as a, has to go through a consent process through restricted discretionary consent. It can be notified, but it is subject to considering how much it is beyond what is expected within the CBD. And there's an image there effectively of what the intention is for controlling urban form within the central city, being the, the road wall height there and then a hem and sort of tower above that as well. So I thought we'd do a bit of an overview for some of the key qualifying matters and their impacts. So first of all, airport. The airport influence area or interface area that has been recommended. The airport influence um area or interface area um that has been recommended um through the IHP effectively seeks to rezone all the operative um suburban, so lower density and RSDT suburban density um transition uh to medium or high density accordingly. And so effectively, in terms of what MDRS or policy three directs, the uh qualifying matter can be ignored in terms of the zoning that's there. The controls really rest around the scale of uh intensification. So anything that is above the um the zone limits or at a sky at a scale four or more, there are additional controls that would would exist um around insulation or mechanical ventilation as well. The IHP have um directed that we are required to draft new uh controls around that. And we're seeking clarification around that matter and also around the management of our development within the higher noise limits being fifty five and sixty five as well. For the sunlight access qualify matter, um like I said, the IHP has recommended the rejection of uh the qualifying matter that we put forward for an alternative recession plane angle for medium and high density areas. Um, staff has asked the IHP to clarify some aspects of the consideration of evidence on this. Um, we've yet to receive a response on that, but we'll um keep up to date with with that lands. The means in the absence of the qualifying matter uh within medium and high density, the MDRS recession plane would apply, which is shown in the diagram there as per the act, which effectively means that at all uh boundaries, apart from the road boundary, the recession plane angle is taken from four metres at a angle of sixty degrees um rather than having an alternative angle uh based on the orientation, for example, protecting um uh northerly sun, things like that as well. There's no difference in terms of the angle that would be applied through applying MDRS. We do have other controls for managing um heights, should be commercial areas and high density in the title there. Um, effectively what is uh directed is that um MDRS recession plane, like I said, would apply within high density areas. Um, however, anything that is above twelve metres um doesn't require recession planes subject to those setbacks. So what you can see there in the image is that depending on which orientation of the boundary that exists, being north, east, west or south, there's a variation of between uh six to eight metres. So as long as your building is setback um according to that, then effectively the height control is dictated by the zone itself rather than recession plane. Again, it's been trying to be purposefully enabling within the zone that we want it the most, being the high density zone. Um, this mechanism also exists within the centre zone, so uh for example, Euriketins and Shirley and everything in between, four of those centres, same principle applies in terms of managing those high heights as well. There's one aspect again that we're seeking clarification on with the IHP with regards to wind. Um, we had proposed introduction of a new subchapter, which effectively was to manage wind um effects above uh six stories, twenty two metres. Um, that seems to be silent in the recommendations, and again, we'll wait to see what the IHP comes back with on that matter. Regarding the coastal hazard and tsunami qualifying matters, um the IHP have re- recommended to accept the qualifying matter. Um, but with a a minor modification. So effectively what it means is that uh within the tsunami management area, um which uh is also within, which effectively encirculates uh the coastal hazard management area. Um, the operative zones apply for uh residential suburban um and residential suburban density transition as well. Uh, again, this is applying the the logic, if you will, of the high dense uh High Court precedent that was set. We can't be more restrictive than the status quo. Um, they have also introduced um or or sought to recommend the acceptance of what's called a residential intensification definition. And effectively what that means is that any density that is beyond which what is enabled within those zones is a non-compliant activity, being the highest activity status that is possible um in a uh district plan uh framework um for a resource consent. Within the existing RMD, our operative uh medium density areas and proposed medium density areas and commercial zones, the status quo provisions apply um within uh the coastal hazard management areas and tsunami risk management areas as well. We had also proposed a industrial interface qualifying matter um which effectively would apply a forty metre buffer around all industrial areas where there was an interface with residential areas. And the IHP have recommended the acceptance um uh of this in in terms of where we landed for our uh council reply position. Um, and effectively what that means is that up to eight metres within the buffer is permitted um or actively enabled. And then beyond that, uh there has to be mechanical ventilation and balconies cannot face the industrial area as well. So it's about shielding um those outdoor living spaces from uh other noise effects that would may otherwise come about from uh occupation near those industrial spaces. Um, like I mentioned in the last session, Ravensdown has a particular control as well um which introduces a non-compliant activity status. So again, the most restrictive for anything above fourteen metres. Um, it also has specific controls on the type of glazing as well because of the um the quality effects that are around there as well. And just to note that through the hearing process for Plan Change fourteen, the likes of controls for within those industrial zones uh is out of scope and there's been no recommendations from the IHP on that matter because of that. Um, like I mentioned in the last session as well, um the IHP have sought to recommend the acceptance of what's known as the wastewater capacity constraint, and this effectively captures the areas that are subject to the vacuum sewer system uh within Preston's um Aranui and parts of Shirley. Uh, this is a system with a very high cost for replacement and upgrade. Um, and there isn't a plan uh un- underway to replace that. And so the IHP recognizes that, or has sought to recognize the fact that we are in a scenario at the moment where there are medium density areas, for example, that are enabled uh around Shirley that are uh developed, uh sorry, that are sought for resource consent for meeting that development. And then are rejected on building consent thereafter because there is no capacity network. And so we've sought to um effectively ratify that within the district plan, which has been um uh recommended to be accepted by um the hearings panel. The qualifying matter basically sets a a net zero capacity approach. And so it captures everything that is there now in terms of delivery of the service for three waters. But say, for example, there was um a row of uh say four units that could be that were demolished. Then you could potentially build a a townhouse that is four units um um and that as well. So you can change your typology. But the net result has to be zero overall within uh those catchments. So as Brent mentioned earlier, we did circulate a um overview of the key topics of information that you'd asked for, uh being for walking catchments, city centre building heights, commercial heights, sunlight access qualify matter and airport noise um as well. And as mentioned, there's a lot of information that is related to all of those specific topics. There's other information that will collate separately um that has been asked for in the in the previous session as well. But I guess the question that we again want to raise is that we want to know earlier rather than later if there are any other specific areas that you want um information on to make sure you're informed about uh any alternatives that you're seeking uh in that as well. I think that was captured in the bundle for all centres. So um I'll double check, but it's captured in the walking catchments around other centres and then.
Yeah, okay, just see the walking distances. Section just had the two questions from Sam.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, not mine. Yeah.
Sure, yes. So I'll double check that for you. Thanks.
Yeah.
So what I thought we'd do is, as of um yesterday afternoon, we have uh mapping and hopefully this works. Um, and provide an overview for how mapping looks. Um.
Sorry, just just before you move off that, can I just ask one question?
Um, no, we do do them at the end, Yanni.
Oh, the end. Okay, cool.
Yes, sorry. Sarah, it's your fault. No, it's okay.
So effectively, this is um our operative uh district plan. Um, in terms of everything's own, um you can see the colour changes in a kind of circular fashion around the central city. Uh, being where we have uh medium density enabled um for residential development. Uh, if we turn on the hearings panel recommendation zoning, um this is effectively uh the image that that we have. So a bit of an explanation, uh everything that we have in this this darker colour, say around Rickerton or Four Avs or Miraval is the high density zone. And everywhere else in this other kind of maria yellow colour um is medium density. So if I go further to these, for example, where there are uh the influence of tsunami and alike, you can see here in the bright yellow that retains the operative um residential suburban or RSDT zones um as well. So in terms of, if we're thinking about just a um policy uh three decision that um council have contemplated, what I thought I'd show is what the concluding picture may look like considering that the operative residual zones would also still hold.
Yeah, can you just explain that operative residual zones?
Yes, so.
You know, I don't think you're quite dumbing it down enough. I'm not meaning that we're dumb, but it's just that this is complex. So you could just, um yeah, the terminology is a bit tricky. And also we do have public um listening as well.
So effectively, everything you can see that in in red that I turned on here, um are all the uh policy three um uh uh catchments or or zones um for uh within and around centres. So for example, if I were to go further north, you can see here in the red is a high density around Papunui, and there would be a transition to just being suburban surrounds there. Whereas the likes of, for example, Miraval has high density in the surrounds and then would have the operative um RMD or medium density in the surrounds there as well.
So operative status quo.
Yes. Um, what I would also.
There's a terminology thing.
What you're what you're describing is what we're voting on as Timber fourth right now, right?
That's right.
Everything that's that's read.
Yeah, everything that's read is within that policy three areas. Yeah. So the IHP have said, if I can turn off all the operative stuff, that everything that has uh near a local centre needs a two hundred metre catchment and medium density in the surrounds. And so all the blue kind of uh catchments you can around see around here is what we have mapped um applying that two hundred metre catchment. And so again, while there is medium density that would be enabled um under a full uh uh IHP recommendation across all suburban areas, if we're focusing on just a policy three recommendation, it is only within these catchments. It's a quite key point. So so if we filter out everything and we just focus on residential, this is the picture that how it looks for um for the policy three uh decision. Uh, everything in this in this green red is the high density and all the blue catchments, um all the medium density as well. The one note I'd make is that the IHP have recommended that everywhere that is um um uh near um neighbourhood centres, being the smaller centres, so your local dairies and the like, that medium density is fine. They haven't specified a catchment, and so it isn't shown on here, and we're seeking clarification on that. And so I guess I'm just signaling that they may come back and say, for example, that it's the adjoining parcel, so there'd be a very small catchment around those centres as well. So again, if I contrast this, if I contrast this to um the full recommendation from the IHP, then that this is the image that we get, um which is obviously medium density um everywhere or across the hills and other places. There there's one element, uh it's probably worthwhile to just flesh out a little bit, which is the effect of character areas. So the IHP have directed that where we have operative character areas um that those uh uh underlying zonings should hold, except where we have re- recommended that um they get reduced. So for example, um in the Beckenham Loop, we had recommended that effectively the islands in the middle um that they should be uh uh removed from being a character area. And so IHP have have accepted that, but they haven't accepted any extensions. So there can't be any growth of character areas, but there can't be a shrink of character areas. So I think another good example probably uh is Littleton as well. Some reasons, right? So basically what we would have is that everything in the light yellow colour is the operative um uh residential bank's peninsula zone. Um, so it's basically two stories around there. And that is retained because there is a large character area around Littleton. Uh, but then as a result, there would be medium density where everywhere where there isn't. Um, that's only that applies here as well. Uh, so that makes it, um I guess quite different to other centres where you would typically have intensification around the commercial area. This is the inverse because of the effects of the character area around the likes of Littleton. Are there any particular questions, queries or uh uh particular areas that councillors like to see? Um, we will circulate this separately. I tell you, all playing ball. Um, and so you'll be able to do this at your leisure after the session.
The map's really helpful. Um. So Yanni, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering, um, I mean, I had questions around the industrial stuff, didn't really understand that. Um. Just was trying to understand. So basically, instead of controlling any industrial activity, we've become more enabling and the onus is on um outlook. But there was nothing that seemed to be about noise, the impact of noise and vibration. So are you able to just advise if the panel addressed anything like that? And if so, how?
Yeah, we've got your query about um uh about vibration, which we'll address separately. Um, but in terms of the noise, that is fundamentally the 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 reasons why the qualifying matter um exists is to protect against noise effects upon nearby residents. Uh, and so it's about saying, well, if you're going above um eight metres, you're more exposed to the noise effects um from uh industrial areas. And so as a result of that, your outdoor living space shouldn't face uh those industrial areas. And you're required to also have mechanical ventilation as well. Um, like I said, we don't have the ability to um change any of the controls within the industrial zones themselves through this process.
Right, but just in terms of like um the how far back from the industrial activity before people can just build without worrying about those requirements that you mentioned?
Forty metres.
The buffer in eight metres high.
And how has that been assessed? Is that just by sound engineering or something?
Yeah, so we led evidence through acoustic engineering um that looked at noise effects and um the evidence that was led was that forty metres um was an appropriate measure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple. Um, with the character areas, like say, and if you um look at Beckenham, what are the protections for the character houses on the southern side of the the island, if you like? So in Addington years ago and and probably Rickerton as well, you've had lovely restored villas. Then you've got three story blocks that are bloody ugly. And you know, uh uh intensification is good if it's done well. Hmm. But there's no, there was no protection whatsoever for the restored villa, so it gets bowled and sold and da da da. So what is the protection when we have a character area but we have an island of? So what is the height restriction in those islands?
So the height limit within the islands, if this were to be a recommendation, which just to caveat this, this outcome wouldn't come to pass if it's just a policy three decision that you're seeking.
Hmm.
But so if 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 there is no recommendation that goes beyond the policy three um areas, then the operative would hold. However, turning to your question, if this were to make a recommendation that you decide on all the IHP um uh uh recommendations or particularly this particular area, then the island would be enabled to the medium density zone, um which is three stories. It's eleven um plus the one for the roof, so about twelve metres overall. The restrictions on the qualifying matter are are very direct, specifically even more direct for likes of character areas because they fall into a special character. because they fall into a special category called other matters. They're not a specified type of qualifying matter. They require a significant amount of evidence to be able to justify. And that means that the the type of controls that we have to manage that can only be where the character exists. And so the interface that we're talking about, where there isn't a character, for example, medium density areas, there isn't any controls that would apply across those areas.
So relevant to Beconham, but wherever there is an island in a character area, at the moment, there's protections.
At the moment, there isn't an island, is my point. So so this has been recommended through the quite intensive criteria that has been applied for character areas because it falls into that special category, if you will. But my point being that the likes of Beconham Loop, that is all contiguous. In terms of the operative controls, that is all one one character area. So there isn't any need for protection for the islands because it is a character area.
Yeah, okay, so.
Tyler.
Cool. I had seven, now I've got three.
Oh, aren't we lucky? Yep.
Could we lock into the Rickett and Bush interface quickly?
So the Rickett and Bush interface isn't on here because it isn't a recommendation from the IHP.
Okay, so it's going to be status quo or?
No, it'll be high density along edge here. So in terms of the policy three recommendation, you can see obviously Rickett and Bush here. The high density border would be all along the southern, south eastern border along here. And so if the recommendation comes to pass, if the recommendation from the IHP is accepted as is, then this is how the zoning would look. There would be no interface to, for example, Rickett and Bush, and there'd be high density along edge. One note to make is that there is an additional qualifying matter that is specifically from the Predator Proof Fence, which if I remember correctly is a 10 metre setback and that's protecting the staghundred trees. So it's an ecological lens that's there. So there is a setback, but there isn't a wider height control.
The next one is the island catchment, particularly around the noise contour. Fifty decibels, the fifty decibel limit. Is that captured in this?
Yeah, so I've just turned on all the layers for airport. And so everything within this hatch layer is where those additional controls for insulation and mechanical ventilation would apply.
Okay, so can you just quickly run over the controls around that that catchment, particularly the one with the?
Around the university?
Yes. Because you'd think essentially, you'd think if you're taking something, if we're taking away densification in one area, the ideal area particularly would be around the island area.
Yeah.
Around the university.
So effectively, if this recommendation be accepted as it is displayed here, then in most instances, people can develop as per their own controls. So medium density would exist within this area and building up to three stories, there wouldn't be any issue. Going beyond three stories or going more than three units as well, there'd be additional controls on mechanical ventilation. Again, we're seeking clarification from the IHP exactly how that works in detail because it seems unclear to us about where the boundary is drawn from the operative catchment for the contour. This is the new, what we have displayed here is the, I think it's the 2023 remodelled catchment, which is which is larger. But they seem to have differentiated between where the operative line falls and the new line.
And this is from CIAO, correct? This was the.
Yeah, this is the model.
The wider noise.
That went through the international panel with AICAN, yeah.
Cool. I think I might put just heads up, put through a recommendation based on this catchment here. I was giving heads up. Thanks.
Get it? Cheers, councillor McDonald.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Can you just holistically explain how this interfaces with PC 13? Because there'll be conflicting recommendations, won't there?
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah. Effectively, all of the controls that PC 13 put forward, that we would have to put forward as a qualifying matter in terms of PC 14, they have all been considered through PC 14. And so there's a separate process through PC 13 that will consider it the residual. For example, Akara, it's not part of PC 14, falls outside of the catchment. So that is spatially, that's part of the consideration for Plan Change 13. But I think there's still a call to be made internally about what elements of Plan Change 13 we still progress with, considering they have been already considered in terms of the merits of those through Plan Change 14. So it may very well be that, and I'm just surmising here, but it may very well be that Plan Change 13 has a variation to it because of the matters that are all being considered through 14. And we only consider a far more defined element of that.
Yeah, so I mean, would it, because I'm just thinking the cost and the time and everything that's included. I mean, is it as simple as withdrawing Plan Change 13?
It is as simple as withdrawing parts of Plan Change 13. So 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 there's no formal process under the RMA if the council wants to withdraw a part of Plan Change 13. It simply issues a public notice and tells everyone that it's withdrawing part of it. So so for example, the council accepts IHP recommendations on stuff that's in both Plan Change 14 and Plan Change 13, then logically the council would would simply withdraw those aspects of Plan Change 13.
Right.
Because it's already in the plan now.
That makes sense. So would we, can we get some advice on that? I'd just, I'd quite like to understand the timelines around it and what we're going to do. Because the thing going through my mind is how much it may potentially be hindering doing stuff while there's that uncertainty just between the two plans. So I'd quite like some advice and some timelines around if we are going to withdraw different parts when we think we'd be doing that. And it would be good just to understand that before we do it. So just the other couple of things, and you mentioned that we're still waiting on information from the IHP. Sorry, we've provided, we've gone back to the IHP and requesting
clarification.
Clarification there. Do they have sort of statutory timelines as to when they need to reply to us? Or is it just sort of, and I don't mean it like this, but when they feel like it?
There isn't an explicit timeframe, no. But they are conscious of the delivery under the Gazette notice, which is that we have to provide a decision on policies three and four by the 12th of September.
Yeah.
So so they recognise that and they know, you know, when we're going to council as well. So.
So I mean, are they are they forthright in coming back with stuff? Well, I guess what I'm nervous is we've got a month. And we need to make sure that we have time to consider everything. Yeah, and it doesn't feel like, I mean, are they acting with urgency?
Yeah, so we did ask the clarification regarding the redrafting of the residential chapter, for example. And I think we issued that on Friday, not last week, week before, and they came back to us on Monday. And so that was pretty clear. The latest clarifications we sent on Thursday last week. So it's been about three working days. And so we definitely anticipate hearing back from them this week.
Okay, so at what point will you flag with us when we're not getting adequate responses in terms of the timeliness? So that, because what I don't want to do is get to a point where you're rushing, then we have to rush. And then inevitably, and it's not a reflection on anyone, there'll be a mistake made. And if we don't get this right, you know, there are some challenges.
For instance, are they aware that we're making our decision on the fourth for the 12ths?
Yeah, I'd expect they do. And I guess this is why.
I hope you're not assuming that, though.
No, but I guess there's a point that we wanted to know your clarification points as early as possible. And so there is a time that's there. And so I'd hope that what we provided last week assisted in some of that recognising. And there's a few more points that we're adding in there as well. But, you know, we're all ears if there's specific matters that you want clarity on.
Well, there was still like the one where I read that they sort of almost criticised us for not providing evidence. Yet we had provided evidence.
We're seeking clarity on that.
So the other kind of things that worry me is if we're seeking clarity, you know, I mean, how do we put more pressure on them to hurry this along? Because I want you guys to have as much time so that we can have as much time to consider things.
Well, we'll just keep a really close eye on that and keep you informed if we think they're taking too much time. But yeah, the only example that we've got so far was, as I said, it took them one working day to reply to a memo.
Yeah.
And this time it's taken two or three. So, you know, we're not at that point yet.
What about the question with regards to sunlight? You said that you've asked the question.
That was asked on Thursday last week. We've yet to hear that.
I just, I just had one more if that's okay. It was just around the, so the, just generically, the three by three across the city. So, I mean, I guess it'll come through when you do that piece of work around what IHP has rejected versus what we've submitted. But does it, are you, have you got enough? Are you confident you can bring back a recommendation that will enable us to make the decision to have the option to reject that portion of of the plan? Because we don't need to do that this year, do we? We can leave that MDRS stuff till the end of next year.
Yeah, that's right. So like I illustrated earlier, if I can just do that again, in terms of just the policy three decision itself. Effectively, you'd only be deciding on areas within those spatial extents.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
Sarah.
Yeah, two quick things. Can we please have a like a five minutes at lunchtime kind of thing, how to use the GIS map? Would be great. And like no advice, just straight down that. And the other one is the, is the rejection or the deferral of MDRS an alternate recommendation that we need to make? Or is it, you say it's just simply the LGA decision? You're able to put that in as a recommendation based on a previous impractical decision of council? Or does someone around the table need to put that up? If that makes sense, is a amendment.
I expect staff would be comfortable putting it forward as a staff recommendation based on the impractical decision that the council made back in March. That was first part of your question. Second part, it's not a recommendation to the minister. It's a decision to not make any recommendation.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, now that's good. And when it comes to numbers enabled, I sent a question through prior to the information sessions. And are we still waiting on information from the IHP?
No, we've got that information in the next part of the presentation.
Okay, and just quickly, Aaron and Andre, and then we, yeah.
Yeah, just two really quick ones first. Where are we at on the airport contour lines potentially going from 50 to 55?
So that's a process that goes through the replacement, sorry, the review of the regional policy statement, which is run through Environment Canterbury. And so that is anticipated to be notified for public submissions, I believe in December this year. You would have seen the draft, you know, responses and things that we provided a few months ago. And so once that process is underway, then then that can be considered through it.
Okay, and then my other question is just from my own research going going forward. What cities around the world, because I did a Google and couldn't find any, have successfully intensified?
I don't think I can answer that question.
Yeah, just it'd be good to look at some similar cities that have done it and where it's really successful. So when people ask us questions, we have the answers and go, well, they did it near and near.
Okay, Andre.
There is a list. And is the map publicly available?
No, no, it's not.
Why is that?
Because it was done yesterday afternoon.
So it stays a secret for you?
No, once we have confirmed from the IHP that what we have drawn is accurate, which we have not yet done, then we will intend to release it publicly. Cool, because then we know that it is the IHP recommendation.
Was that your question, Andre?
Yes.
Was that your question?
There's just a critical part missing on the map. Are we able to go slightly southwest?
Why are we not surprised?
And zoom in a wee bit. I'm just trying to get my head around one part here because the commercial centre in Horswell is now in the purple, but sorry, I have to go back to what relates purely to our decision. So the the commercial centre is not on here.
So that, you're right in terms of North Horswell. That is a part that we're seeking clarity on from the hearings panel. That is similar to the neighbourhood centres where they haven't been explicit in terms of the catchment. But you're right, the commercial centre itself is definitely part of the consideration. There's no qualms about that. But the extent around that is the question that we have to the hearings panel.
So clarity is being sought, yeah. And and just just a further clarity, so what we're seeing in the red there is that enables up to four stories?
Three stories through medium density.
Not four?
No, no. So we had put forward a precinct approach that would enable more than medium density and that's recommended be rejected by the hearings panel. And instead they've said that all local centres need to have just medium density within 200 metres.
Cool, so okay, cool. So but clarity is being sought on the North Horswell.
Correct, yes.
But it wouldn't be the high density because that was removed?
They've recommended for it to be removed. So they have, what they've said is that the six stories within the commercial centre is recommended to be accepted. However, in the surrounds where we had recommended to have high density in surrounds, they've said that medium density is a sufficient response.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, but still as high in the commercial.
Correct.
Currently untouched, gotcha.
And they've also sought to apply the environment port, sorry, consent order for the change in the zoning for the Woolworths development.
Gotcha, yeah, okay. That's a lot more critically now. Thank you.
Okay, and Sam promises he's got a tiny.
Very, very quickly. So just around, I'm just thinking, public interest in terms of you watching or sitting in the gallery today, the mapping. So we'll get it confirmed by the IHP. Do we have a timeline on that? I'm just thinking, people are really interested.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, it's their discretion. But, you know, once we've had the confirmation, we want to publicly release what we know is what the IHP have recommended. We've interpreted, for example, the walking catchments and a few other bits and pieces as well. And they may say, look, you've interpreted this incorrectly and needs to be changed. We want to publicly release what we know as the IHP recommendation. And we'll do that as soon as we have that confirmation.
We're feeling an oppression.
But in terms of that, I mean, is that, could you maybe relate when you have some very grumpy councillors that would like it confirmed as soon as possible? I just think the public interest in this is huge. And it's, you know, they're an independent hearings panel that don't cop the flat, so to speak, of local accountability. And so it's upon us to tell them we're not overly impressed and would like that confirmed as soon as possible. So people can actually understand it.
Yeah, fair enough, absolutely.
It's been a three year process, kind of a rush process in the final three weeks, right?
So, look, is it okay if we take a break now?
Absolutely, it's a good segue.
10:55, how are we going for time for filling this in it? Because I know we lost a bit.
Yeah, fine. So the next part of the presentation, chair, is going over the LGA decision in terms of the three, four and the benefits around that. It's fairly small and so we've definitely got enough time. I think we've got about 10 slides in that element and then obviously questions are after.
So you think we'll still be able to finish by 11:45?
Absolutely.
Excellent. So 10:55, everybody, please be punctual. When you get back, it'd be great. We better kick away because we lost that time this morning. All right. Carry on, please.
Thank you much. So what we thought we'd do, just walk through the LGR decision. This is effectively.
My apologies, thank you. This is effectively the decision that was alluded to on the first of May. And the recommendation or the conclusion that council reached was to say that we're focusing only on policy three and four areas versus MDRS overall. And what we walk through is what that means in terms of different options that are available and other options that we may put forward as well. So what we're thought to summarise here is a spectrum of the different options that council would be able to consider, being from citywide response of all of the IHP recommendation versus a more targeted response, which is obviously just three and four. So under policies three and four, obviously all high density, some of the medium. So under policies three and four, obviously all high density, um, some of the medium density, as you saw in the mapping, and would come about and selective other, uh, residential zones that also come about. Got central city obviously as well, commercial centres, um, specific purpose zones such as schools that exist within those catchments. Um, and possibly also the wind chapter, we'll see the clarification on the I H P on as well. On the other side of the spectrum, like I said, we have all of the I H P recommendations and by way of example, that would include the decision on all of the airport noise contour, um, all of the character area conclusions as well and citywide medium density. Well, we've also put forward there as an option two, which sits halfway between, between the two, which is effectively, um, grabbing all the, uh, parts of option one being policies three and four. Uh, and also considering other sub-chapters that, uh, effectively, um, unlikely to be changed in the future process or can integrate neatly, um, within the district plan. Um, and we might as well accept, um, um, uh, the, the, the work that's been done on those matters. So, for example, the transport chapter, um, we can consider all of that within that, um, subdivision chapter, um, all of that. Heritage as well, um, when it comes to, uh, the heritage areas, um, for example, sorry, heritage settings and, and items. Um, we have individual sites dotted all around the city. If we were to have a compartmentalised decision that's just focused on policies three and four, we would have to split that entire schedule spatially based on where that fell in terms of considerations for, um, specific heritage, uh, items and settings. Um, what we'd be recommending is to consider all of that, um, because it's all been considered rather than having to go through a separate process, um, later on to, to verify, um, those, uh, as well. There are also specific, uh, character areas that fall within that, um, such as Heaton, um, Dudley and Littleton, um, which fall within a character area. And like I said earlier, uh, the I H P has recommended that all areas that are operative would hold, including where there's been a recommendation to seek a reduction in size um, of those character areas, uh, as well. So, in terms of categorising all the qualifying matters, it does get fairly complex along the spectrum. And this is part of the option two considerations for everything and including those that don't have an influence on those areas outside of policies three. So this is a grouping, if you will, of all the qualifying matters that relate to city centre, to the commercial centres and those that are both within medium density or M D R S only area and around a city centre or ones that are only within the M D R S area. And the point of this is to highlight that there is only one qualifying matter that exists only within an only policy, um, M D R S area. And so we have a whole myriad of different qualifying matters that, um, are, uh, in, in, in both. And what we'd be recommending is to consider, um, uh, all of those operative ones that exist across both because th- there's no real change on that. And so the considerations into sub-chapters and different overlays and the like, um, is not just solely within that confines of policy three. It's beyond that as well because of the qualifying matter split that's there. The other, um, quite important element to consider is any future direction that council may require to give effect to in terms of those areas that may exist within policy three environments, but also beyond that. Government signalled in July, it's what's called Going for Housing Growth, uh, programme. And fundamentally, that is set to, um, review and update the, uh, National Policy Statement for Urban Development. And it has quite a few elements to it that would, uh, effectively seek change beyond those policy three catchments. So for example, they are seeking to, uh, introduce a update to policy three whereby all areas where there is a high accessibility to services or also, um, high demand for housing, that that is enabled, um, further as well. And so the way that I see this, um, in terms of considering what may come to pass through the Going for Housing Growth and update to the N P S U D, is that the lens that we have for accessibility is a lens that can be applied for where medium density would exist. And so while we are today making, uh, while we are, um, uh, thinking about, um, the policy three decision, which is just focused within and around those centres, when you should be conscious about the fact that there is likely to be medium density that is still, um, uh, enabled through an alternative means within all of those highly accessible areas. In addition, and which flavours that as well, is that they, the government has signalled the requirement to meet a thirty-year uh, high growth scenario as well. And so any development or any plan change that we do, um, would need to meet that. In addition, they've signaled that there would be, uh, a, a greater opening of greenfield development, um, uh, specifically along the rural edge, so no rural border around that edge as well. And so there are prospective changes that could exist along those edges as well. Um, when you think about change to airport noise contours and other elements as well, that potentially has an avenue for, for growth as well. Uh, Going for Housing Growth has also talked about strategic transport corridors. This is above and beyond effectively what is within the current N P S U D. So the current N P S U D focuses on rapid transport stops, which, um, the I H P has accepted that, uh, crushes doesn't have. However, the, this direction is looking at specifically corridors and where there is potential for growth around those and how those corridors may change in the future with updates, with introduction of mass rapid transit or, um, other vehicle modes, um, along those corridors. The Going for Housing Growth framework effectively has signaled that the government will tell us where those corridors that it believes are appropriate for intensification sort of exist. And it will direct what the catchments are around those corridors as well. Additionally, um, Going for Housing Growth has signaled, um, that there will be the enablement of, uh, mixed use um, across the city. So by mixed use, I simply mean that, uh, the likes of commercial and residential can coexist together. And specifically, there'd be a larger amount of mixed use enabled within those policy three catchments. And we understand that to be those areas that are also highly accessible as well. So this is potentially quite a large area. Um, and that would enable the likes of, as they signal, uh, metropolitan, uh, supermarkets, uh, small office spaces, retail and the like, um, as well. There are other specific changes to residential standards that have been signalled as well. Um, specifically minimum unit sizes that exist within Plan Change fourteen, which the I H P has recommended to be accepted. And minimum balcony sizes, which are part of M D R S at the moment in terms of, uh, minimum outdoor living spaces and the like as well. So, um, at a minimum, a, a plan change will be required in the future to implement, um, all of this, uh, as well. The last part is around, um, qualifying matters. Um, the government has certainly expressed some frustration with uh, qualifying matters have been considered through, um, intensification, plan change processes, uh, around the country. Uh, and they have signaled that there'll be a, a greater, uh, evidential threshold for qualifying matters as well. So, for example, like I mentioned earlier, character areas are in a special box on that, that they're an other matter. There's a far higher evidence threshold that's there and the government has signaled that that threshold will increase, uh, beyond that. So, um, with that in mind, uh, and touching on the earlier comment, what we have sought to do is test the sufficiency of different scenarios for enablement versus different scenarios for growth. Now, when looking at these graphs, uh, and I will go through them in a moment, it's important to remember that this is based on commercial feasibility as of today. This is a threshold that is far greater than what the National Policy Statement for Urban Development sets. The National Policy Statement effectively sets a threshold of what is plan-enabled. It's what the district plan actually enables on the ground. Commercial feasibility typically is about a tenth of that, as in what is commercially viable today to be able to develop. And no doubt, as councillors will know, under the current economic conditions, commercial viability is less. We're seeing less building consenting activity, for example, across, across the country, um, because of rising costs. And that's, and I'm raising that because commercial viability will change over time. If we do this evaluation tomorrow, it will look different. Um, and again, this is a test that is, uh, uh, far beyond, um, what the minimum requirements are of the N P S U D. So the three colours that we have there represent three different growth scenarios. The green is the Stats and Zed High Growth Scenario, which, um, as I said, the Going for Housing Growth Programme has signalled will be the benchmark for thirty years. The orange is what's used in the Greater Christchurch Spatial Plan, uh, work, which effectively is a medium growth projection plus margin on top of that, um, for error or other growths. I believe it's in the order of twenty percent. And then the blue is what's under the, um, most recent uh, housing capacity assessment from twenty twenty-one, which is adopting a medium growth scenario. Christchurch historically has been almost exactly against the Stats and Zed, um, medium growth projection. So the high growth projection, we firmly believe, um, is not us. Um, and would, would be quite a substantive change to be able to, uh, uh, um, um, deliver that, that demand overall. So beginning at the top, what we have sought to, no, I'm going to start at the bottom, my apologies. Beginning at the bottom, what we've sought to capture is the full I H P P C fourteen recommendation. So this is medium density as a baseline across almost everywhere, um, residential areas. Uh, all the high density as, as I've recommended and the like. So we can see there again in blue is benchmarked against, um, medium density. Sorry, the medium growth projection. And in the orange, also medium growth projection plus the margin and the green, the high growth. So, um, we have under that prediction, using the full I H P scenario, uh, almost a hundred and twenty years of capacity under a medium growth projection and, um, about seventy-five years of capacity under a high growth projection. Moving to just the policies three slash four recommendation, which also, as I showed earlier, includes the operative. We have a lot of medium density, um, everywhere as well. And so that would still exist within those areas that are outside of policy three. Um, under the high growth projection for, again, for commercial feasibility, we have almost thirty years. Um, and then, uh, uh, to a maximum under the medium growth projection, um, of about forty-five years. Again, thinking about the perspective Going for Housing Growth Programme that, um, we'll have to give effect to in due course. We've sought to model the areas of high accessibility. And again, highlighting prospective only. We've sought to capture all those who have high accessibility to services, which is a model that we had based on, um, um, framing of that policy that they've proposed. And under the high growth projection, we would have, um, about fifty-five years uh, ranging to, uh, about seventy years, uh, under the medium growth projection. And the important part of that in terms of the prospective housing growth, um, scenario is that it's only based on accessibility. Like I said earlier, Going for Housing Growth has talked about intensification within specific corridors of transport. We don't know what that looks like. Um, and has also signaled about enabling more greenfield development along the edge. We don't know how far that would be. But needless to say that that would increase the amount of capacity along, along that line as well. Might pause there in terms of sufficiency because there's quite a lot there to digest. Um, and if you, if, if it's okay to ask, answering your questions specifically on the sufficiency side.
Okey dokey, thank you. So Tyler and then Andre.
Kilda, uh, you were talking about the strategic transport corridors and I'm wondering what the city spine Q M, um, well, I, I guess the rejection of has impact on in regards to the conflicting uh, recommendations between the Going for Housing Growth and the H P recommendations.
Yeah, so, um, just to be clear in terms of the qualifying matter for city spine was effectively controlling development along, uh, the road boundary to ensure there was options there for enabling a, a, a better corridor for mass rapid transit or any other transport for that matter, uh, into the future. Um, and it wasn't enabling as a qualifying matter, further intensification in that corridor. That being said, the way that the council notified position was couched was that we recognised that there were centres along that corridor, both Papunui and Rickerton. Um, and we sought to utilise some of the policies within the N P S U D, which talked about accessibility to um, public and active transport corridors to further enable high density along that corridor. So we had in a notified, um, position, a, uh, high density, uh, zoning that extended from the city centre down Papunui Road and then beyond the Papunui Centre, almost Belfast really, of, of six stories. And that was fundamentally premised on the fact that it is a, a, a strategic corridor. Um, we didn't have it so much in Rickerton mainly because of the other qualifying matters that fragmented that. Pico Shans, few heritage areas, Rickon Bush interface and that fragmented, um, uh, church corner and, uh, Rickerton overall. Um, the I H P recommendation for high density, um, has removed that continuum, if you will, and has, has, has focused it more on the centres. So Papunui, smaller, uh, Miraval is smaller and the catchment around uh, the city centre is also smaller. And so that means that that high density along that, that spine, if you will, um, has not been included as part of the I H P recommendation. I've done answers to your question.
It does, thank you so much. Um, the next one was, what are the, what's updated? With the current projection as per the, as per twenty-three, twenty-four in terms of crushage growth?
I don't, I don't have the figure to hand, I'm afraid. We, we, we're only here to try to sort the difference between demand capacity and how that looks on P C fourteen scenarios.
Okay, no, that's cool. That's good for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Andre.
Thank you. Um, I'm just curious as, as to why we don't also have a snapshot of current housing demand and sufficiency.
Hmm.
So right now, you know, the social housing waitlist, um, the number of applications for rental, this kind of thing. Like, wouldn't it be useful for us to have a snapshot on the current situation, not just what we foresee as being demanded in twenty, thirty years' time? So we, we're making housing plan decisions, that's the kind of thing we also need to have in front of us.
Yeah, I, I guess this is about the, the, the L G A decision of how far you go.
Yeah.
Um, between intensification, but, um, we could run a housing sufficiency test over the operative as well, if that would be useful.
Yeah.
For the L G A decision-making as well.
Yeah, because if, if someone believes the district plan is currently working and you've got, you know, seven hundred kids wagging up an emergency accommodation, some might say, or maybe it's not working. So just, yeah.
Sure.
It's a current snapshot would be, I think, be very useful for the current context as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thanks, Andre. When can you get that to us? As soon as you can, it'd be great. Uh, Yanni?
Uh, thank you. Um, I mean, just, um, I think the other thing in terms of that question would just be around, um, if we had any sense of, uh, and it comes to the social impact, but I'm really interested in the issue around Maori. So what we're looking at in terms of provision for housing for Maori, and I know that the I H P made some comments on that, but is there going to be a sort of any sort of discussion with the local runanga or how are we incorporating, uh, Maori's view into this decision? Around sufficiency, capacity, access to affordable housing?
So, so if you have a, if you have a question about, um, how the I H P considered it, um, I'm not sure whether we're gathering a bundle on that at this stage, like.
Um, we've, we're, we're, would, the question's been raised by the councillor, um, in the previous session around how the um, I H P considered, um, various elements on that. And so we'll be summarising that. We did provide a response, uh, last week about um, how we consulted on, uh, with Maori as well, um, which is in the, in the bundle of information that we shared last week.
Okay, and is just, um, in terms of current, I'm just trying to get my head around current capacity in terms of zoning. So if people, if we, if people built to the current limits within our current zoning, where is that reflected in these options? This is pre-plan change notification?
Yes, that touches on, um, councillor Moore's question and, um, we'll, we'll provide a response to that separately, um, addressing just the current district plan.
Thank you.
Is it, is it a correct assumption that currently, at the moment, um, it's not a zoning capacity issue? It's a, it's a market delivery issue?
Do, do you mind if I just take us, take us back councillor to, to the reason why, um, I've taken us to the slide and the discussion about casting?
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, it's for the purpose of, of helping inform your decision on the fourth of September about whether you want to constrain your decision on I H P recommendations to just policy three and four areas. Or whether you want to make a decision then on other matters in the I H P recommendations. So, so just focusing on the kind of key takeaways from, from, from the slide. One would be that if you constrain your decision-making to just policy three. One would be that if you constrain your decision making to just policy three and four areas, the middle band applies, right?
Yeah.
And the council is then meeting those capacity targets.
Right, I'm just, I guess, yeah, probably what would be helpful though, in terms of understanding what housing sufficiency, how that's actually being measured. That's probably what I don't quite understand. So if we look at the graph, if we just go policy three and four, and we see that we, we would get in the medium growth, which I understand is kind of the, the one in line with most of the stuff that, you know, has come true in the past in terms of projections. So we would have, we would be at forty percent of, but can, like, is that? Can you just help me understand a little bit more about how you come to the definition of housing sufficiency or what that, what that model is? Because maybe that's what I don't quite understood.
Forty years.
It's forty years, so it's simply running the demand of housing against the capacity that's there to detail what sufficiency is.
Sorry, is that, does that include the current capacity of the zoning? So at the moment, if we did nothing, then basically we, we don't have enough, like, what's the current?
As Brad said, it's about decision making for the fourth and, and doing nothing unfortunately isn't an option. So we haven't sought to detail that. We're focused on just the minimum that's being directed in terms of policies three and four. But in terms of the most recent housing and business capacity assessment, we can provide that information, what we've most recently done.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is how, how much extra capacity do each of these options or sufficiency, how much do they add to the current level?
Sure.
So we need to see the, the current level, which we will do.
The start, the starting point of the council's decision making though, isn't the current level. The starting point is what the national policy statement requires.
Some people are making comments around things like the social housing waitlist. But if we already have that demand and we have that sufficiency in terms of capacity, then surely that's not, that's not a cause of having a high social housing waitlist, right? Because we already have.
Trouble is you can't live in capacity. You have to live in a house with a roof over your head.
Well, exactly. So the market's not delivering, but that's different to zoning, right?
Yeah.
The house has to be built. You can, so something's, if something's not working.
Houses aren't being built now when we've got housing sufficiency already. So just allowing more sufficiency when they're not being built.
It's not going to solve it.
Doesn't address the problem.
You can't have one without the other.
Yeah, but we, we have a direction.
You're missing, I think you're missing the point. We, we already have a certain amount of capacity and sufficiency.
I get the point, but yeah, as I say, you can't live in capacity.
I think we'll just get a staff response to that to save the cross chamber.
Yeah, well, as I said, we'll provide a simply circulated response, but I think we might continue on if that's right. Cheer with the remainder of the L G A slides.
Yes, please. Oh, hang on, I just said one, one more question from Sarah, very quickly.
I, I mean, it might be more relevant for the next slide, but it does go back to the others as, if we kind of decided to only make decisions on policy three and four and not do sort of medium density standards. Are we still able to do the other things that might be outside policy three and four as amendments, such as mixed use zoning in Sydney?
Absolutely.
Yep, cool. Excellent.
Just a great segue. That's the last question.
Thanks, you.
So as you just highlighted, thank you councillor, there are a number of elements that of the plan change that a separate plan change would be required if we were to seek that outcome that we had put forward as part of plan change fourteen. So like you mentioned, mixed use brownfields we had proposed around Sydney and also other brownfield areas in Wollston and Papunui. The I H P have considered that that is beyond what is able to be done through plan change fourteen. And so if we were to go and progress what we had proposed through plan change fourteen, that could be done as a, as a separate schedule one plan change at any time after certain has been made. The same goes for the likes of trees. So we had proposed an updated approach to managing trees, which was based on the scale of the tree trunk and the required setback scale based on, based on that rather than the static approach. And that was seen to be far more dynamic and responsive to the ecological needs of trees. The I H P have again come to the conclusion on that particular matter that it's beyond the scope of plan change fourteen because of the High Court decision, because it would effectively in some instances been more restrictive than the operative because the setback would increase, albeit that in some instances it would also reduce. For the same token, the financial contributions that we proposed, that could be progressed as a separate, separate schedule one plan change as well, because those parts of the act that enable financial contributions are not tied to intensification plan change.
Correct.
Great. City spine as well, that can be progressed and, and no doubt in time will have to be progressed as a separate designation as well. Similarly, we did a lot of work around residential character areas. There were, top of my head, three or four additional character areas beyond was in the operative district plan that we had proposed through plan change fourteen. And there was an additional other through a submission that we had recommended to be accepted as well. And all of that work effectively can still be used in a separate schedule one plan change beyond plan change fourteen. The, the main reason for not including it was, is beyond the ability for the plan change to consider it. And that also some of the local detailed evidence that was required to be justified as a qualified matter was a higher bar than, than what I guess we'd anticipated, considering it fits in that, it's a very special box. Like I said, going for housing growth as well, that will have to be a separate plan change at a later date. The government has said that they intend for the N P S U D to be updated by mid two thousand and twenty five. And so any direction for responding to that will be beyond that. And so I guess what was signaled through government and our interactions with them is it may very well come to pass that the additional requirement to consider the rest of plan change fourteen, the M D R S element in December next year won't be the deadline. The new deadline may very well be the going for housing growth deadline, which could come to pass in, say, early two thousand and twenty six. Again, that detail is yet to come out through government. They haven't released a full consultation material, but just signaling in terms of the timeframes for going for housing growth may very well mean that the M D R S element is changed to a two thousand and twenty six notification rather than decision in December next year. All of this will require a full evaluation of a work programme. As per previous presentations, we have a very full work programme and there'll have to be some tough decisions being made by council in terms of what projects we look to progress to the plan change programme. Delaying decision in terms of not considering those areas outside of policies three and four effectively means that M D R S won't be provided across the whole city as a permanent activity. And that would align with the May decision that council made. It does provide for that pathway of optionality for M D R S as per the council submission and as per the pathway that's set out in going for housing growth as well. So the next steps for us is really about seeking again those clarity points. And, and hopefully you have a, a fixed timeframe for that. We are, like I said, seeking those clarification points from I H P. The information that we sent on Thursday last week is not, for lack of a better term, a one and done. We can ask for more. There's no limitations on that as well. And make sure in terms of information that we've sent on the topics that are interested, like Brad said, that you familiarize yourself with the evidence that's there in terms of making an alternative decision. A drafting service in terms of those alternatives are available. Again, we are in your hands. So if you are interested in a particular avenue to explore as an alternative, then we can collate relative information on that in order to draft what an alternative recommendation may look like as well. And we intend to report to you next week in terms of the delay that we may anticipate through the residential chapter redrafting society I H P has put forward to us as well.
Yeah, so, so just, just picking up on, on that point, we are going to do some more work pretty quickly about how staff can be able to provide more practical sort of help to help guide or facilitate your decision making. And so that's something we're going to be doing pretty quickly over the next day or two. And, and I think as a result of that, John, after that, think about having another information session.
Yes, that's right.
I'm not sure. We've just got to work the time out. It may not, may not fit in on a briefing day, but it might be another day or it might be so.
However, with the importance in the timeline, it may be better to bump something.
Yeah, we will consider that, yeah. Always, we're always, it's a movable feast, we're always prioritizing. Tyler, quick question. You?
I don't think I've asked this question yet, which was relating to a point you made around residential character areas. And I'm wondering how the thresholds can increase further on those character areas.
That's a very good question. And I can't say I have the answer to that because government have provided any further details than what I've, what I've said basically. They simply have said that the threshold should be increased that it makes it more difficult to restrict any intensification that they would otherwise direct.
Cool. Central government. Love it. The next one was in regards to trying to find it. If someone else has got another one, oh.
I just see him quickly.
Yes.
You're good. Well, you can flick it through, Tyler.
Yep. Oh, the record, the thought I had actually was, I wanted to run it by council was to see if we may be able to do, and I know can't suffer a bit more risk of this. But the big three around the impacts and the smaller things around the commercial shopping centres, et cetera. So for example, Rickerton, Hornby, Papunui, I think it would be really beneficial to see what the impacts are. And in that decision, because you obviously got the big three, then you've got the city. And then you've just got the basic M R Z. I'd love to see if we could get maybe just something a bit more what's the word bespoke in terms of advice or thoughts around, not thoughts, how do I word this, without actually getting any direction here? The information shared in more of a bespoke angle. Because what, what I'm seeing, and I read all of the report, it's, it's quite complicated. Even for myself who's been in this area before, it's very, very complicated. And a lot of conflicting arguments, particularly from lay submitters in comparison to expert witnesses, of which are very difficult to maintain. The things I'm trying to understand is one, the social impact assessment within those character areas, particularly the residential's around Rickerton, even Island, Island catchment have some kickback. But I wanted to see what, what we're trying to find here is if us big three dislike some of the recommendations brought forward from the I H P to be able to provide a flat platform to provide alternative recommendations. So if we ran it by you saying, okay, you're saying this is a hundred meter catchment. We say, we're not sure about that. Can we put something in? This is just to recommend, a question I want to ask the council, see if it's okay to, to work with the big three. And then obviously do the citywide ones separate. Just a thought.
So I, I guess in the first instance, what we could do is provide an overview for what the impact may be for the recommendations within, like you say, the big three, big, yep. And, and to say, well, that's, that's the baseline that, that you're working off.
Yeah.
And, and from there, if you don't agree with that, then, you know, then, then there is an alternative recommendation from that.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah. In terms of the specific, you know, evidence that is around those areas, I guess it's fundamentally around the walking catchment side of things in terms of the degree of intensification, which you've received the information on. It's also around the commercial building heights, which you've also received the information on. And then I know specifically that you've asked about Rickerton Bush. And so we're providing a, we will be providing a summary of all the evidences related to that one as well. It would be good if there's anything beyond what I've just mentioned in terms of evidence that you would like us to collate together on top of doing a summary of what the impacts are of the I H P recommendation.
Okay, so that's, that's really clear, is what you're after.
Yeah.
And, you know, I can feel the pressure cooker, temperature going up here with the time constraint and the potential amount of work to respond. So if, I'm going to have a crack at this, but if councillors could really try and get any questions or recommendations or asking for advice through to the staff by Thursday this week, lunchtime would be good. You could have a late lunch if you need to. That would be really helpful for staff. I think it's good if we've got a Thursday, we've got a kind of a, you know, a goal there to get these things in. And then, and then staff will come back to us with, with guidance on, on, on that information that we might need. And when we're looking at having a decision on that, you will come back to with information that will go to the minister. You'll collate all the submissions and any information around those issues and bundle them up. Is that correct? As a kind of an evidence base.
Yeah, what the, what we'd like to be able to do is at the time of the council making its resolutions on the fourth of September, you have already worked with staff on, on that drafting service to come up with any alternative provisions that you want to propose to the minister. Staff have helped you identify the places in the I H P record where you see evidence and submissions that are being relied on for the alternative recommendations. So that's all part of the work that, that we expect that we will be doing with you over the next three weeks.
Yep, that's right. So on the fourth, we will accept some recommendations of the I H P, we will reject some and we will propose.
Yes.
Basically.
Yes.
And the proposals will have, you'll, you'll provide the evidence that's already been submitted.
Yes.
And, and our evidence as well. So are we all kind of vaguely clear about what's going on? Are there any other questions?
I just, I just had one.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Tim then, Yanni.
Just with not getting advice, but just clarifying, we can meet with staff just to clarify some of our questions. Is that okay? Or is it, because I'm a bit confused now about, you know, what there's no secret squirrel or anything, I just want to clarify.
You can just throw your questions through.
Okay.
Staff will not give an opinion, but they can give clarification and new advice. Okay. So, and, and staff are working on another session as well, so. All right. So, sorry, Yanni and Yanni.
Oh, yeah. I was just wondering, are we going to get advice back as part of the housing sufficiency around the urban development strategy, the Greater Christchurch work programme and the social and affordable housing plan? And I was just wondering if we'd looked at what had happened in Sarawak where they've had a massive amount of new, new housing and yet they've got some of the biggest waiting lists.
You're not going to get any information from staff other than the information that's in the I H P record. Because that's the only information you can take into account when you're making your decision.
Right, okay. Cool, thanks.
Yeah, just, you mentioned, which is really, really good, working on these data around potentially the differences between the, you know, our final or our rider reply and all that. I guess just in, in looking at the stuff we want to put through as, you know, accepting or rejecting and the like. As soon as that's available, will that be sort of circulated or, I'm just thinking of the deadline of Tuesday. If you need a few days, because what I'd really like is that.
I think we probably deal with it in the, in the next session, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, so we'll do, you know, I mean, I'm happy to wait till, genuinely happy to wait till then, if that's.
Oh, yeah. So you're saying if possible, could it be pre-circulated, whatever's come in?
If I may, I'd hope that we can circulate that by the end of this week.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's a good idea. Andre?
I'm just fact checking myself, but didn't Wellington Council meet with the I H P face to face and ask questions? And, and why don't we do that as well? So I'm trying to get my head around. Am I mistaken there?
Well, we're in your hands, to be quite honest with you, because you're the one making the decision. So if you want to see clarification and bring the I H P and ask questions, then it's your prerogative. And that's what they did in Wellington.
Okay, because, sorry, I, I, early in the session, we heard that's not an option.
Okay, because, sorry, I I early in the session, we heard that's not an option.
I did too, yeah.
Am I mistaken here or?
Well, well, the the reason we've asked you to tell us if you've got any questions of the I H P is so that we can record them in writing and the I H P can reply in writing.
Yeah.
Rather than it just being a question and answer, which isn't very efficient in the council meeting. So so that's why we've been asking for these questions all the way along.
I think to be fair, to turn to my response, the I H P did direct in minute forty six the process that they sought for clarification. So I H P said that there would be, like Brent said, a process in writing, to be fair. In terms of saying, well, if you have clarification questions, it'll be transparent, it'll be on the website, it'll be in writing and we'll provide a response in writing. So.
Yeah.
To temper my response, apologies, that 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 is likely the difference between the Wellington scenario and our scenario. I I don't know the ins and outs in terms of what the expectations are that I H P and Wellington said.
Yeah.
Probably worthwhile to recognise Wellington is is more of a unique scenario than us, because they're also doing a full district plan review. And the same panel, if I'm correct, was also considering the full district plan review as well. So they're still doing additional work today on the rest of the district plan. So there's far more of a, let's call it a relationship that exists between the two.
Yeah, okay.
And then last question from Mark.
Yeah, just to explore that a little bit further. The reasoning I have to ask for the I H P to actually present their recommendations physically to us in the meeting on September the fourth. Is basically so that the public in our city can see who these people are and what they're recommending. It's it's a faceless being if we're getting these recommendations purely emailed to us and in writing and on our website. It would be nice to actually to be able, you know, see who they are.
I mean, the question is, how long would that take?
The legislation says that the I H P delivers a report making a recommendation to the council. And the council then decides on accepting or rejecting the recommendations in that report. So that's all the legislation requires.
It seems really unusual not to have them actually presenting it to us.
No, it's not in a district plan context. It's it's very normal in a district plan context.
And and all sessions are recorded online as well.
Can I just add, it would be highly unusual that they would present to this for a woman that.
Yes.
Yes, and time constraints as well would be an issue because a lot of them are out of town.
Okay, well, I think neatly brings us to the end of the session. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, it's a thank you.
Just repeat the Thursday goal. Thank you. So, welcome everyone to this afternoon's briefing sessions. This is live streamed, open to the public. And it's the staff to provide us with guidance. And it's not actually a decision making forum, so I hope there's people watching and it's really cool to see that map there. So we've got people on Zoom, we've got a couple of people gone home that crook, so we've got Kelly. Kelly, Yanni, Sarah. I think she was going to say them. Okay, so I'll open. I'll open the floor to you to begin, please.
Thank you. Hopefully councillors, you you already know Tom and Sylvia from previous presentations in council. Just just by way of background, this came from some requests during the L T P where we were discussing budgets in terms of the I A C. And what was being proposed, levels of protection, that type of thing, and working within within the budgets that we'd proposed. The Three Waters teams worked closely with Parks on this in terms of alignments and look and feel. And this is a bit of a snapshot of our strategy there to give the level of protection that we need over this. Next period of time without sort of prejudging any. Anything that might come from the hazard adaptation studies in the future. So it gives us that flexibility as well. So I'll hand it over to Sylvia and Tom to lead you through this, so you get a bit of an idea as to what we're doing over the next ten years.
Kyo to koto. This is a Three Waters update, as as Brent has said, and already noted by one of the clever councillors that this is in fact not a picture of the Otakura Avon River Corridor. It is an AI render of what the Otakura Avon River Corridor could look like in the future, done by the very clever David Little. So just to give you, we've got about twenty five slides. It won't, okay, because about half an hour to get through those. So we've got plenty of time for questions if you have any at the end or during the presentation.
No, we haven't. We usually have them at the end.
Fantastic.
Otherwise, there is no end.
Yeah. I'll give you a little bit of background, just in case you need it, you probably don't. But this is the green print. It was produced in two thousand and nineteen under the regeneration plan, which came in under the two thousand and sixteen regeneration act. It's an eighty six page plan with the provision for stock banks, pump stations, tetra ponds and wetlands. And it specifies that that permanent stock banks should be set back from the river on stable ground. And there should be provision for them to be raised over time. Now, this is a six hundred and two hectare area, which used to have about six thousand homes in. So this came in to the district plan through the outline development plan, which you can see on the screen there. And very specifically to Three Waters, we have stormwater management areas. And we have stock banks. And you'll note that both of those things have little asterces beside them, which means that they are indicative locations. And that's because this was a very early stage of design. So there's some flexibility there. We don't have to do plan changes if we want to move them. So moving on to our objectives in Three Waters. We've got really just two major objectives and everything else we do is targeted on those two. The first one is flood protection. And with flood protection, we do have to acknowledge climate change, adaptation plans and vertical land movement. So adaptation in this sense means allowing room to adapt the programme in the future. And this is hand in hand with the coastal hazards adaptation programme that council is currently undertaking. The Joliet models show that over ten thousand homes or properties are at risk in a future extreme event, such as a one and two hundred event and twenty one. So flood protection is a pretty big issue for the lower Avon and something that we certainly take very seriously. The second objective is improving water quality, and this is under our C S N D C conceit, which has specific timelines for when things need to be built. In the Avon. So this is our current indicative stock bank alignment. And what you can see on this is that it's similar to the generation plan, not identical, but similar. And it is subject to change as we progress with design. It allows for that room for the river. We've got that tidal delta flood plain showing there, although you should note that although it is coloured blue, it will not be blue immediately. And the stop banks are really set back from the river, and that's for resilience purposes, so geotechnical stability, but also that room for the river. And as we work with these stock bank alignments, we are working very closely with our parks and transport teams here in council. And we're also engaging with community groups that use the space in the area as well. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Tom to talk a little bit more about the strategy behind.
So it's all that grey area there is meant to flood.
The blue area.
Oh, well. Within the pink.
Yeah, within the pink.
Yes, carry on.
Yeah, that's certainly intended to be flood plain and floodable and making space for that floodwater to move away from the river and be stored and like.
Yep.
The other thing probably I'll note that those of you with very sharp eyes would have seen that that pink line isn't continuous along the entire length. And there aren't actually gaps in the stop banks there. That's where stop banks tie into highland. So it might look like there's gaps, but they in fact won't be. If we've done our jobs right. Talking about what we have there today, however, is what we call our temporary stop banking network or the current stop banks. It's got a slightly different shape and they've got a slightly different extent. They don't go up as far towards central city as the previous slides. They only go up as far as Swan's Road. And they notionally have a life that ends in twenty forty. We did some work starting back in the twenty fifteen and onwards to strengthen and enhance those. Stock banks that were put in post earthquake to give them a life to around twenty forty. They were sized at that time for a one percent annual acceptance probability event, or otherwise known as a one in one hundred year flood. But something that you might expect to be exceeded only one percent of the time or one percent chance in any given year. Or half a percent for tidal flooding. Now, since that time, there's been some change, primarily an understanding of the nature of those extreme events. We have had a number of very high extreme sea levels since the the that work was done and the tidal statistics were updated. And so where the original design had some freeboard, that freeboard has now been. Lost to our new understanding of extreme levels of the sea. So yes, the temporary stop banks do contain the events that they were originally designed for, but with very little or no freeboard. And the other issue that we're facing with the stop banking network as it currently stands is there's increased maintenance with time. As you'd imagine, as we near the end of that design life, there will be increased maintenance required. But it's really projecting this forward to the future, which drives us to some urgency for the programme. I'll take a little bit of time to talk through this graph because it's not necessarily that straightforward. On the blue line, we have the combination of a single sea level rise. Scenario plus vertical land movement. And so you'll see with time, which is plotted on the horizontal axis, that we're seeing an increase in water levels from twenty, the twenty twenty average water level. Now, in reality, this is just a scenario. It is not a forecast or a prediction. It's not what will happen. It's just a scenario. There's, as you would have learnt from the coastal hazards team, there is a wide range of possible future scenarios, but I just picked one for simplicity on this chart. Rather than a whole range of different potential societal pathways or vertical land movement scenarios. But you can see here with this example, looking forward in time, we can plot. The change in flood that will be. Contained within the temporary stop banks as they currently are today. So as the sea levels rise and as the land drops, the size of flood that can be contained within the temporary stopping will drop. And so by the end of their life, it might be that they can only contain a more frequent event. Say a one in twenty year event or a twenty percent A R I. Sorry, five percent A R I event. So that's driving us to try and move forward and accelerate our work on the stop banking network and the corridor. But it also makes us think about what will come in the future and reflecting back on what was in the regeneration plan. And talking about adaptation over time, when we're thinking about stop banks, we're thinking about what might we build immediately? For the nearer term and what might we build longer term? Or allow for change or adaptation in the future? We certainly don't want to commit council to a course of action in the near term that could prejudice or predetermine the coastal hazards adaptation planning programme. But we do have some needs, as I've just discussed. So or some urgency, as I've just discussed. So our current strategy is looking out about thirty years. What can we build in the next? Five, ten or so years within about the period of the L T P or within the life of the temporary stop banks? That gets us another thirty odd years of of life before even decisions are made on even longer term. So that leads us to having a initial stop bank that's built for a medium term horizon. And then allow those decisions to occur, which might be to top up and raise those stop banks again in the future. Sometime in about, say, thirty years as an option. And what that might look like in cross section is what I have on the slide. So the blue outline there would be what might be built in the near term. With an option to build something else in the future, being the the red lines. And we have that played out in part with inside the long term plan and the infrastructure strategy. So what you have on the slide here shows our budgets currently provided for in projects and within the programme. To fund stop banks and stormwater treatment facilities and pump stations within the corridor. So the the stormwater drainage and the flood protection programmes. Or activities, I should say. And so on the bottom left hand corner, you can see some dark green there. That's our funding for immediate design activities that we're undertaking with projects right now. The lighter green is projects committed for within the L T P for building. Areas which I'll show on the next slide. And then the darker pink is programme level funding that we can allocate to. Activities within the programme. And that total funding there shown in the dark pink would be sufficient to construct those thirty year stop banks. Before the temporary stop banks due at the end of their life. And then we have that light pink projecting out through the infrastructure strategy, which relates to building out the rest of the the infrastructure proposed. So that's the stormwater treatment facilities and pump stations and the like. So I have a question to ask ourselves. And obviously, as a briefing, we're not asking for any decisions today, but we have some opportunities to look at those projects that we currently have. Within the long term plan and think about the split of the infrastructure that's proposed within the programme as a whole. So looking at this in plan, you can see that we have current works under construction for stop banks. You would have may have seen the Wateki Street Stop Bank has been constructed. And with our colleagues in the Parks Department, we are doing work in the Avon Park to area to build the stop bank. And we're currently having design those green areas, so Bixley, the Anzac to Wateki Street project, Avondale area. And also in coordination with the Parks Unit, the Cures Hub area. Behind those proposed stop banks, we have a number of pump stations. These are pretty heavy pieces of infrastructure, as you'd imagine, to help the stormwater drainage network into the river during floods. And we have four of those currently in design in the lower reaches that tie in with those projects that we've seen on the previous slide. There are a number of others that are proposed throughout the network and we are going through a design process to understand. And establish their sort of exact positions and and nature, but this is just to give you an indication of how we might look forward in time, how much. Pumping might have to be undertaken to maintain stormwater drainage within the areas adjoining the river corridor.
Wow. This is a lot of pump stations.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, as we work through the design, there will be some that might move and change, of course. But this is where we're at as of today, looking forward over the long, long term. The other big infrastructure investment within the corridor from a stormwater and flood protection perspective is the stormwater treatment facilities. And as per the previous slides, we have some of those in design and the lower reaches and some that are still in the planning. Now, these are there primarily for two purposes. One is to improve the stormwater quality before it discharges into the Otakura Avon River. And also to help balance some of the flood pumping requirements. So if we have a bit of storage, then we can make the pumps a bit smaller. And we have been in close coordination with our colleagues and the other units to help. Their design work and our design work come together. And as part of that, we have developed a working plan, which is what you can see in the table in the middle of the room. Now, this is for our internal coordination exercise with the purpose of developing this plan. Help us understand how assets are going to be co-located and working together and help us explore some ideas. Now, this is very much a living document. It's just where the thinking is at today. It's not sort of set in stone. sort of set in stone or fixed in that way. And it's there really to help make sure that we're not in any sort of conflicts and and we can understand city pathway relative to stop banks, for example, and or treatment facilities versus future recreational areas and the like. And you might see some ideas being explored, like a long retreat road. We were thinking that there could be an option to realign the stop bank. So we put that on this plan, just to help understand what that might look like. And it also has enabled us to look at areas where we don't have space for stop banks. There isn't sufficient room between roads and the riverbank to have to allow us to construct those, the stop banks as we currently see them or expect them to take. So the footprint just isn't there. There isn't width. And we might end up with about 20% of the length if in flood walls or equivalent, you know, steep banked infrastructure. And we're hoping to show you what that might look like moving forward with time. If we end up with some vertical wall solutions as opposed to stop banks, they can be quite significant in the landscape, for one. The second issue is that generally we're building, looking to build them out of sheet piles. And so they're not as adaptable as stop banks. You might want to put them in for a longer term horizon. And some places where they might be required, I've just got some, we came up with these tiles, had these developed to help illustrate what they might mean relative to people on the, for people on the ground. That top tile is Avenside Drive just downstream of Woodham Road. The old girl's high site just out of screen to the to the right there. And you can see how that might sit within the landscape there. On the bottom tile, that is by the outlet to Horseshoe Lake there, that that canal there and pump station 205. And that is obviously a very narrow stretch again. These two tiles show us how the stop bank and the flood wall might come together. Or and how the stop bank might look in the landscape. So that tops image there is around near to the Gayhurst Road Bridge on the upstream side of that, where we might have to transition from a flood wall into a stop bank. And the reason I put this here is just to illustrate that difference in in elevation. So if a flood wall wall were to be put in, it might be put into a much longer time horizon than, say, the 30 years we're expecting to build that stage A stop bank. And so you can see there on that top image that the stop bank's at a lower level and then the flood wall built to a higher level. And that bottom right image, you can see just what a stop bank might look like in the stage A sort of instance, further around near Avondale Road. Where there's a bit more space, bit more room for the river and 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 there's space to construct a a stop bank to that's immediate width. If we think about flood walls, sort of more more in a more close view. This was a plan we built or bought together when we're looking somewhere further in the downstream reaches. How might that look if we're close to a road and relative to a footpath? And you can see it as a substantial piece of infrastructure. Now, 2.2 metres is just to take that as indicative. It will depend on how the life you're expecting out of the wall relative to those other drivers I mentioned earlier around sea level rise and vertical land movement. But on particular note, we have a length that we have in a project that has some funding this financial year. And that is the Bexley area downstream of Pages Road, between Pages Road and Bridge Street Bridge. And so we have just an image here to show the height of what a flood wall might be. And the top image shown and read there, flood wall to a height of 13.41, that's in Crosschurch District Drainage Datum, is what a flood wall might need to be if it was there for a long term horizon. So has a reasonable allowance for sea level rise over, say, the next 80 to 110 years. And some allowance for vertical land movement that we have been observing more recently in the area and freeboard and the like. So it becomes substantive impact, I suppose, on that landscape. The image below might be the height of a stop bank if it were built more to that sort of 30 year time horizon. So that's where we're heading in the near term. And I'll just hand over back to Sylvia, who's going to have some slides on what we've been doing to date and where we're coming from.
Just a few. These are just some pictures to show you the current work sites we're on at the moment. Just to give you some context around what we're doing. So this is Bexley. And the great light green line you can see there is where we're looking to build the stop there. As you can also see, Bexley is now an incredibly wet site. So it does limit our construction window to the summer and it is a difficult area to work in. This one is just to show you some of the natural wetland that's forming or wetland, let's not call it natural wetland that is forming in Bexley. This is in the middle. This used to be houses. It's pretty incredible how fast nature has claimed back some of this land. This is just to remind you of what Wateki Street looked like after the earthquakes, when we'd bought, when some of the houses had been purchased, but not all of them. This is what it looked like when we were constructing the stop bank. Again, just see how wet that site is on the right hand side there, as we were hoping to construct the wetland, the treatment wetland. But this is why we can't do it right now. It's incredibly wet at the moment. And this is what it looked like over summer when we were midway, we just about finished the stop and construction there. You can see on the left hand side of the stop bank where the tidal wetland is going. And you can see how the difference since post the earthquake era. I'm really proud of this one. This is the Wateki Street tidal wetland forming. It's doing it by itself. We are going to put some holes in the temporary stop banks, hopefully later on this summer, and just encourage that natural process. But it's looking really great. The ecologists love it. I think we can all be quite proud of that. And then finally, this is Avon Park, which is under construction at the moment. So we've got a big section of stop bank going in there as well. So that's all our formal presentation, but we've got the picture in the middle there for you to have a look at if you'd like to see a hard copy. Or we're very open to any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. I've got two questions so far, Tim and then Aaron.
Yeah, if you look at the whole area and, you know, your photos of the wetlands and it's wet and everything, it's a natural wetland in its own. Why are we putting stop banks further towards the river? When, say, for instance, if you ran it on the riverside of Retreat Road, that would be that whole area of the old Morris Street, etc., where there's nothing there now, would be a natural flood plain. And then you've got Avondale Road, if it was on the the west or northwest side, ran right along because there's nothing between the river and Avondale Road. And then if you look at State Highway 74, would be the same logic because we're taking pressure when we have a flood. The whole idea is hopefully to soak up some some area to take the pressure off the rest of it. And I'm kind of wondering why.
Well, you might, I'll flick back a few slides to answer that. And it's partly told on the plan here and the difference between this plan and the outline development plan. So in the, well, in two of the three years you mentioned, so up around Retreat Road and along Avondale Road, we are showing the stop bank is further away from the river than what is shown in the outline development plan here. So unfortunately, I don't have these two slides back to back. Yep. But you can see that in the outline development plan where that A is in the B for about Avondale Road, that the indicative stop bank alignment is much closer to the river than what we're showing on that indicative plan that we have pulled together and is on the table in front of you. So very much those ideas you were speaking about, trying to make as much room for the river, trying to set back the stop banks as far as possible. Now, when the regeneration plan was being developed, those activity areas were being considered. And there's still some decision making to be made around those in those activity areas and their long term use. So certainly that plan in front of you is is very much a work in progress. It's it's not fixed in stone at all.
So you're saying you can't just take those areas for a flood plain because use hasn't been determined yet? Is that basically what you're saying?
Well, the the design is ongoing and there are decisions that need to be made. I'm just not predetermined.
And also to remember that there's there's areas there where room had to be made for the stormwater quality treatment basins as well. So you're treating the other parts of the city coming in there before it's the river. So it's a compromise between the two.
I mean, there must be a reason, but like you look at State 70, State House 74 or Anzac Drive, whatever you want to call it with the 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 stormwater treatment could have been on the other side because you've got an area of land there, but.
Sure. So the the challenge with putting the stormwater treatment facility on the riverside of the stop bank is that those facilities are there to concentrate contaminants. So the runoff that comes off the urban areas has pollutants in it. And we concentrate those in the stormwater treatment facilities. And so if that was on the riverside of the stop bank, there's a risk that during a flood that the floodwater could pick up those same contaminants and release them into the environment, which would defeat the.
Sorry, if you look at probably not best on this slide, but yeah, there is land on the city side of Anzac Drive. So if you're going to do a flood wall, if it was running along this, the line of Anzac Drive, the stormwater treatment could have been on the city side. I'm not, there must be a reason why, but I'm just kind of thinking we, and then you join into the heath kit with, if we're going to have a flood event that's, you know, a metre or so or two metres and with ongoing sea level rise and the the what will happen with AF8 when it happens or the hickering, whatever. I'm just wondering if that much pressure, wouldn't we be trying to relieve as much pressure as possible on the up up river? Yeah, I don't know.
Well, along Anzac Drive, you can see in this plan, we have positioned or proposed the stop bank to be as close to the road as we can
Yep.
can get it effectively. There is, as Brent mentioned just before, requirements for stormwater treatment behind, but also we are leaving some space behind the stop bank for management of any excavation that we have for the stop bank itself or for stormwater treatment areas. Because we don't want to take all that soil off site. It would be very expensive. Some of it will be contaminated. If that were all to go to landfill, it would create a considerable cost burden on the program, which we're looking to avoid and manage those soils on site. So there is certainly reasons for the alignment that you see in front of you on this plan.
Cool. Thank you.
So just looking at the the basins that you've got there, if you had more basins and more flood plain area, could we then have less pump stations?
There's certainly a balance between the amount of storage you have available and the size of the pump stations. The number of the pump stations will depend on exactly how much water we can take from the existing outlets and bring together. And there's a balance there, of course, with connecting existing outfalls that takes infrastructure as well. So we certainly haven't, not at a point where we've optimized the design yet. We'll certainly be considering how best to balance whole of life costs through the design process and looking at either minimizing the number of pump stations we have to build and the size of them for a number of reasons. A, they're costly to build and they're costly to run. And they obviously have not just a dollar cost, but carbon cost and the like. So we certainly look for ways to minimize the amount of pumping in the in the scheme. But with sea level rise and even current flood levels, we have the need to pump stormwater in order to maintain stormwater levels of service and the existing land use that we have there.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remember the statement that was made right at the start was the this this proposal is is designed to not predetermine any of the hazard adaptation work so that it gives you a bit of flexibility there further down the track. So I think it's a it's a good compromise and a and a good win in terms of providing the level of service that we need to.
Yeah.
There's certainly a balance there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, so oh, and the work's great, like, and some of those photos, brilliant work. And I drive through there down Anzac Drive a lot, so I see it kind of updating. The, so my question's more about when we get our floods and especially the really, really big ones that flood all through town and St Albans and that. Is our problem that the water just can't get out to the ocean fast enough? Is that our ultimate problem? Because don't we get a block up at the estuary? And then depending on what the tide's doing, we're in trouble and.
Well, the the.
Don't want heavy rainfall on a king tide.
No, you don't want heavy rainfall on King Tide, absolutely. So the lower part of the river, say downstream of Curers Hub.
Yep.
Or Curers Reach is dominated. The flood level is really, the extreme flood levels are driven by the tide coming back in.
Right.
So that's not so much to do with rainfall. It's to do with the level of the sea and storm surge and the like, filling the estuary and that water coming back up the river.
Holding up.
Yes. And well, and upstream of Curers Reach, it is more the river coming down.
Yeah.
So that's where you might expect some influence of the combination of the rainfall events and the level of the sea creating some some challenges with flood management.
So then can we, for a high tide, can we gate at so at the bridge at South South Shore?
So we.
Which leads me to my next question. It's loaded, but.
You don't want a barrage, do you?
Well, council has
I know this has been.
previously investigated, looking at tidal barrier or estuary barrage. And that thinking goes back to the 1960s and earlier.
Yep.
And there have been a number of investigations over the years and that hasn't been favoured and hasn't been put into construction, clearly. And the most recent work has been done post earthquake and it found that there were that the stop banking proposed here would be a more cost effective outcome.
Which leads me to my loaded question then, which is at the bottom of your plan, when you get down to Brighton there, by where our old construction site was at Alstairis, because that's, and then you've got the reserve there. If you take a shortcut to the ocean there with an under pressure pump, because you can get, I don't know what, it's 10 times more water through a pressured pipe than a gravity feed, whatever it is, is the number. I suppose you ramp the pump up, we'll get even more, but you pump the water out through it. So we create a diversion there. So, but we only ever use on massive flood events. Does that work or does that not work?
Well, if you weren't.
You understand what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, if you weren't.
Sucking out tonnes of cubic metres of water.
If, if, yeah, in order to make a scheme like that function, you would need to prevent the sea coming up the river. Otherwise, you're pumping around in a circle, right? So you'd need a combination of.
Which would be a gate at South.
At Bridge Street or or somewhere else. And then you're pumping probably just over that gate rather than beneath the spitting out. But that is, it would have very significant ecological, cultural, recreational landscape and amenity benef, impacts. So that would all have to be considered in such a decision. And when we did look at those range of potential impacts and benefits, as I say, post earthquake, we found that the stop banks were preferred.
Answers it.
Thanks, Aaron. Yanni.
Thank you. Your apologies. Um, just, I was just kind of, like, I get, I get the work that we need to do in this area and I understand you've done a lot of planning. I guess what I'm just trying to understand is in terms of flood risk across the city, how does this rank in terms of priorities?
Well, we do go through a prioritization prioritization exercise through every three years with the LTP and arguably every year with the annual plan. So it is closely considered. In the land drainage recovery program, we looked at flood risk across the city and we looked at number of houses at risk and cost benefit ratios and looked at a range of different criteria to inform a prioritization. And we had our high priority drainage work followed by stop banking work in our lower river streams. And the LDRP, while it was in place and you might have recognized it through the, as you might remember it through the long term plan, did most of those high priority projects. might remember it through the long-term plan, did most of those high priority projects. And following that, we were going to do, propose to do stop banks and that's kind of where we're at now. That's not to say that there aren't areas in the city that are at flood risk. There clearly are. We see those examples and there are opportunities through the long-term plan and funding has been devoted by yourselves to address some of those issues. So that is, that is a combination of both stormwater drainage and flood protection projects that you will see moving forward.
Right. So do we still have like a land drainage, drainage program with like the specific projects or is that all just kind of been changed into a different format? Well, we did have like, when we did the flooding task force, we had a lot of projects that were identified and it was quite a comprehensive listing, but I can't remember us seeing that as councillors in recent times. But I guess the, the work looks really good. I guess my concern is about the.
Hang on, Yanni, can they just answer that first bit of your question?
Sure. Shouldn't have interrupted.
No, that's right.
Any sense the flood task force, we, we did report on the priorities, the progress against those priorities that were identified and Sylvia, you might have brought that to council, I can't remember. We certainly folded that and what was shown in the Land Drainage Recovery Program at that time into the LTP. And it is still arguably in the LTP as unfunded projects that we, that are not forgotten. So they're still in our system. And more to the point, I think, is that council has allocated some funding within the long-term plan for the local drainage improvements program. And there will be a prioritization exercise needed to take all these areas throughout the city and create or identify schemes, potential schemes to address them and cost them and bring them back to yourselves to go through that prioritization exercise and allocate that funding out through the LTP. So I foresee a process where we will pick up or revisit again our earlier schemes, also pick up new information that has been, come to light from not only yourselves, of course, but through the community and go through a identification, a scheme identification process and prioritization process for allocating the funding in that program. So we will revisit the bigger picture and we certainly don't look at, you know, the, this program in isolation.
Has the city, citywide flood modeling been complete yet?
Well, we update our flood models a lot. It's an ongoing process. So the citywide flood models, we did a lot of work in the Avon and Heathcote going back five plus years. So those are now being updated again. So as, as the infrastructure gets built, as not only our infrastructure in terms of flood schemes, but also as development occurs to the catchment, we need to keep up. So it's an ongoing process of modeling. So yes, the citywide model is, I suppose you could call it finished, but it's never finished. It will, it's an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Does anyone want to have a closer look at the map or you're okay? It's a really good presentation. Thank you. So it's a work in progress. This is not, none of this is definitive or set in stone or anything like that, particularly the flood walls, which I find pretty, you know.
Well, we certainly wanted to bring that as a theme today. I know it was, it is, because it's of significance.
Yeah. And you reckon they'd be sheet pile, all of them?
Well, we haven't got to the design of all of them yet, but that's certainly the, the current proposal for the areas that we do have in design, which is in the Bexley, well, that sort of Anzac Drive down to Bridge Street on the right bank or the southern bank.
Can you like put wire, wire netting over them and grow plants on them and stuff?
We should definitely note that they will often be clad and that's actually a safety requirement when they're alongside a road. And there are other options to make them less able to be graffitied, for instance, and various other things. So we will consider that during design, definitely.
Okay. Yeah. Erin, did you have another question?
Yeah, it was just on, on that, because the modeling for the next hundred years on what goes up and what goes down is so varied, like you can't get down to lock in a number and I'll take a bet. So because it's so varied, can all of the walls that be built incrementally over time? Is that a design you can use where you go, we throw it an hour, half a metre or a metre and then, oh crikey, we need to ramp them up and over the next decade or we look like we're good now for 30 years? Like, or do you go straight to the top of the mountain right at the start and then everyone goes, crikey, can't wait for the sea to rise?
And, and although this only shows stop banks, but that's exactly what we've done there. We've given that level of protection and then in the future as vertical land movement or sea level rise.
Right, so that's small blocks in the middle as where you'd start.
Yes.
And then, and then you add to it at a point in time when you want to increase or restore the level of protection again. And that, and that, as you said, that's, that's the movable feast. That's the, what is the land movement, what is the sea level rise?
So it is far more challenging though for a wall than it is for a stop bank. When it's earthworks, it's easy to scrape off the topsoil and lift it. But for a wall, say it is sheet piles, you're talking about, there are some very challenging technical hurdles you'd have to overcome to weld on more sheets above or the like or something. So when we start, start thinking about flood walls, we are thinking about putting them in higher, earlier in a first pass so they have a much longer life or a much longer, you know.
Effectiveness.
Period where they'll be effective, thank you.
And, and what makes them kind of waterproof?
Oh, this secret, Erin.
Oh, so it's just that, that, they're, they're, they're tight, the clutching between the, the sheets is tight. They can even be, they can even be welded if needed.
Yeah, because I've seen overseas, they're using like liners now on certain areas, especially ones that are quite temporary where you don't flood all the time. But when it does, it's like a big liner.
Yeah, there's certainly a whole lot of different options there and technologies for demountable or temporary flood defences. The challenge with them is, or many of them, is that we are talking about very long lengths here and we don't actually have that much warning time. Normally, some of the big schemes and internationally, they have much longer warning time between the rain falling, they're on much bigger catchments, so it takes longer for that flood, flooding to build in the main rivers.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Australia, for example, they, or, or Bangkok, you might have flooding for weeks, yes. And, and you might have a week's warning or a few days. Here we have, you know, it's ours.
Cool, awesome.
Okay, so this is all pretty long-term stuff. None of it's going to happen overnight. I mean, the Waiteki.
It's really happening, Pauline.
Yeah, not going to finish overnight. Waiteki stuff was coming through the ITI Committee, you remember? How many years ago was that? Now, it's, it's.
And, and the funding for those initial stages there is in this current LTP over 10 years, so this is happening.
Right, that's good. I wonder if we want that, that map put up in the elected members lounge somewhere because it's, can you spare it or do you?
Sure.
It's quite good to have those things to refer to and have a bit more time to look at it. Thank you. Right, nice to see you, thanks very much. So where to from here? Are you going to keep us updated on the progress or come back again?
Yeah, well, we do have the quarterly, we've got quarterly updates for Three Waters, but also probably will pop up as one of the key projects to find.
Yep.
Get a one pager.
Yep. Thank you very much. Right, we're just waiting for the next, for the staff to come down, they're on their way.
Yeah, yeah, these walls are very, very.
Yeah.
Yeah.